All right, it is 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right, Jamie, if you can take your role.
Collins.
Hi.
Coyle.
Here.
Iker.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Patrice.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here. All right, welcome, everybody. We like to start off the meeting with our favorite part. It is recognizing 207's Best. And this month, it's 207's Best Award for Fine Arts. So thank you all for being here. If we can go ahead and start with Maine East?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. James, if I can invite you to come stand by us. You see, you have a fan club here tonight. I'm excited to know. I am proud to share with you all Maine East 207's Best winner for this month, James Splicel. As is common with talent in the arts, James is an excellent storyteller, and I loved learning about his evolution in a variety of aspects of the arts. James's talent actually grew out of some notable challenges in his childhood. From a very young age, it was clear that James had extensive sensory needs and an abundance of energy. He constantly sought sensory stimuli and could rarely satisfy his impulsive energy. James credits his very musically-inclined parents for channeling his challenges into music. He was only in second grade when he started drum lessons. From that point on, it was clear that James's challenges could actually be leveraged as assets in the performing arts. Soon after the drum lessons started, James further discovered his musical talent through the School of Rock. It was here that he had a chance to learn and perform with students of a similar skill level. In addition to being exposed to a variety of aspects of music, this program also gave him practice performing in public. Regrettably, James was too young to realize how cool it was that he performed at the House of Blues, but has come to value all performances, even in smaller venues. These experiences grew James's confidence, and he has most recently performed at the School of Rock's Hot Band Program, which is more regrouped and audition-based. Naturally, by the time he got to middle school, James sought as many performance opportunities as he could, including band, jazz band, choir, show choir, and the musicals. This continued into high school, where James really found his footing onstage. He has had a role in every play and musical offered throughout high school. James also performs in and supports the V Show and the Pitt Band. James loves what performing arts has offered to himself and his peers. He gets an intense sense of fulfillment from being able to express himself and cherishes the relationships he's formed along the way. James's success in the arts has also paved the way for leadership in that area. He is in Triumph, our musical honor society, and is also the historian of our thespian troupe. James loves all that he's learned as a member of the Drum Line and has been the captain and a mentor of the team for the past two years. James does hope to channel his passion for the arts into a future career in a really unique way. He hopes to study gaming. In his very little spare time that he has, James is a video game enthusiast and believes that the artistic design and critical thinking involved in some games can have a profound effect on people. He hopes to someday design games that intrigue others and teach critical lessons. As you'd expect, James's talents are widely recognized by our staff at Maine East. Andrew Beckwith, band director, said that it's a privilege to have James in our band program for the past four years. He's grown into a confident musician and a leader who our younger students admire, respect, and look to for advice. He's been our Drum Line captain for two years and has helped shape a culture where music students feel safe and that they can trust in each other. He has sought out many opportunities in the Music Department, variety show, pit in acts, jazz band, and performing with a choir and orchestra. In addition to his musical talents, James is equally talented onstage. His approaches, he approaches his roles in this way he approaches his music, with tenacity, humility, and a drive to succeed. His growth is about celebrating the journey of learning and sharing experiences with his peers, all while capping those experiences with successful performances. I'm thrilled to see James receive this award. His character and talent are truly deserving of it. Ms. Linnea Grooms, our Drama Director, shared that James has proved himself, has proven himself to be a true and talented theater artist and leader. His work onstage is nuanced, creative, and authentic, finding the human elements of a character on the page. His dedication to theater over the past four years has been astounding, but his ability to stand up as a leader among his peers with patience, inclusivity, and passion, both on the executive board and off, help him shine bright. Though it's my first year at East, I have been able to see the powerful influence James has within the Fine Arts Department, and it's been an honor to work with him. Mr. Phil Asher, Broadcasting Teacher, shared that as a junior, James excelled in radio and TV production. He thrived telling visual stories and developed a particular talent as an editor. It's been wonderful to watch him synthesize his abilities as an actor into roles behind the camera and in front of the computer. James developed an interest in pursuing more intensive work as a filmmaker and media producer. His schedule this year did not allow him to enroll in advanced television and filmmaking. James wasn't deterred, and he began taking the course instead as an independent study. This speaks to James's persistence as a learner and as a devoted student of the arts. Mr. Owen Doka, Social Science Teacher, shared that in AP US History and Physics and Government, James has proven that he's not only talented in the music and fine arts, but he's also talented in social science. James is curious, hardworking, and inquisitive. He's a leader in the classroom in every possible way, especially in asking questions that are relevant and open-ended. He enjoys discussing ideas and appreciates diversity of thought. It's been a pleasure to have James in both AP US History and Physics. Lastly, Sergio Moro, Counselor, James's counselor, shared that through my time working with James, he has consistently demonstrated what it means to be a multifaceted student by dedicating countless hours to his craft in the Fine Arts program. He's consistently been active in art plays, and James's diverse interests and talents not only enhance his own learning, but also enriches the experience of his classmates, castmates, and members of the band. James has an inspiring presence in any setting. James shared with me that he's most grateful for the support of his family and amazing friends he's made on his high school journey. He said that Fine Arts has given him confidence to be himself and form lifelong friendships. James will be very much missed by Maine East next year, and we can't wait to see what your future holds. Congratulations, James. James, can you share with us who's here with you tonight?
Uh, yes. Uh, I got my younger sister, who is pointing herself right now. Uh, my mother, my father, and my grandmother.
Awesome, that's great. And I think we have some of your big Maine East fans back there, yes?
Okay, I'm sorry. People like physically, yeah, okay. So, uh, we have Mr. Beckwith, my band director and band teacher. Ms. Grooms, my drama teacher and director for the shows. And Ms. Georgievic, who is Fine Arts Chair? Chair, yes. Head of all the fine arts stuff.
James, tell us some about your future plans. What are you gonna, what are you headed into next year?
Yeah, as it was said on there, I want to go pursue a Games and Simulation major, like study in design. I don't, I'm not exactly sure of what facet or role I'd like to have it, but I just really want to be involved in some way in the artistic process and like hopefully even like combine like my interest in like music and theater with that as well.
Oh, cool. Thanks, James.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, James. If we can move on to Maine South.
Come on up. All right, everyone. This is Nicole Smecca, and she's amazing. So here we go. It is my privilege to introduce this year's recipient of the D207's Best Fine Arts Award, Nicole Smecca. Throughout her time here at Maine South, Nicole has continued to demonstrate a new standard of excellence in the world of fine arts. She has a passion that spans multiple disciplines, including film, theater, journalism, choir, and dance. Her versatility as an artist is remarkable, and she's a true storyteller, captivating audiences with every performance. Whether she's onstage or working behind the scenes, Nicole approaches each opportunity with a deep sense of creativity, enthusiasm, and drive. Her endless list of accolades speak volumes to her talent and dedication. At the 2024 All-American High School Film Festival, she was awarded Best of the Fest and Female Rising Star, while earning first place in multiple categories, including PSA, News, Journalism Talent, and Music Video. She further excelled at the 2024 Golden Lion Awards, where she received Best Alternative Film Award and at the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, Chicago, and national competitions. She claimed first place for short-form fiction and editing. Her success extends beyond film. In broadcast journalism, Nicole was a student reporter for the JIMMYs, the National High School Musical Theater Awards. For photography, she earned a state selection for Art Connect 2024. And for chorus, Nicole was part of the ILMEA All-State Chorus 2024. Nicole has even acted on Broadway in New York and at the Chicago Theater. Is there something you haven't done? To help highlight Nicole's outstanding success, Dr. Carolyn Keith, the Fine Arts Department Chair, shares, Nicole Smecca being named 207's Best in Fine Arts was an easy unanimous decision. Nicole is a true trailblazer, and I have seen her leave an indelible mark across multiple disciplines within our Fine Arts Department for the past four years. As a standout photography student, her work consistently pushes creative boundaries. In our music program, she shines as a dedicated choir member, and her talents extend to theater, where she has performed in numerous productions. Additionally, Nicole is a leading student in our broadcasting program, earning multiple awards for her outstanding films from prestigious organizations like NATAS, MMEA, AAH, SF. I don't know what those mean. And was most recently honored as the student reporter this past summer for the JIMMY Awards. In musical theater, we talk about the trifecta talent of being able to sing, act, and dance. Nicole has the quadfecta talent in visual arts, music, theater, and broadcasting. I'm so excited about her future and to see her recognized with this award. Mr. Mason Strom, WMTH Executive Producer and a broadcasting and filmmaker teacher at South adds, As Nicole's film instructor at Maine South High School, I can attest to her remarkable talent, dedication, and versatility in the realms of broadcasting, filmmaking, and theater. Simply put, she is a performance wizard. Nicole embodies the rare combination of exceptional talent and unwavering work ethic. Throughout her time as my student, she has demonstrated an unparalleled passion for storytelling, evident in her multifaceted involvement in writing, directing, producing, editing, and acting as her projects. As Vice President of the WMTH Broadcasting Club, she has showcased her expertise both behind and in front of the camera, covering news stories, hosting live broadcasts, and demonstrating remarkable versatility in various roles. Her experiences as filmmaker and theater performer have further enriched her skill set, allowing her to seamlessly integrate elements of both mediums into her work. One of Nicole's most remarkable qualities is her innate ability to adapt and thrive in diverse environments. Her proficiency in leveraging social media platforms as a means of engaging audiences reflects her keen understanding of contemporary media trends and her ability to connect with viewers on a personal level. She has a list of accolades that speak to the artist she is. It is no surprise that Nicole is now being named for D207's Best. It is truly, it truly reflects her hard work and passion. Matt Haynes, Director of Choir, shares his insight. Nicole is incredibly active in every facet of the Fine Arts Department. Music, theater, broadcasting, and visual arts. I can speak to her involvement in music. Nicole has been a member of the Choral Program for four years and the Vocal Jazz Ensemble for three years. She has been a three-time All-District Vocal Jazz Performer and two-time All-District Choir Performer. Last year, she was selected for the All-State Chorus. In addition to her honors, she is a consistent leader and role model for the Choral Students at Maine South. She brings her creativity and insights to every rehearsal and performance. She has worked tirelessly to help recruit middle school, high school students to the program by helping create material for both print and social media. Nicole is a consummate professional, and her legacy will impact Maine South for years to come. Paul Belisario, an English teacher, also shares, Nicole is a warm, friendly, and hard-working student who brings a unique perspective to our class discussions. Her ability to analyze complex literary works and share her insights with the class is truly impressive. Nicole's creativity shines through as she explores different interpretations and perspectives, always striving to deepen her understanding of the material. She should be very proud of all of her accomplishments here at Maine South. And lastly, Mary Lee Moore, an art teacher, states, Nicole brings creativity and thoughtfulness to everything she works on. She often stays after school for extra time in the darkroom, approaching each project with enthusiasm and fresh perspective. Nicole has an innate talent for making others feel welcome, often taking younger students under her wing and guiding them with patience and warmth. Her versatility in the fine arts is boundless, unconfined to any single medium, revealing a multi-dimensional talent that flourishes across disciplines. In conclusion, Nicole's hard work and talent have no doubt, leave no doubt that her journey in the fine arts will be one of continued success. No matter which part she chooses, whether in journalism, film, theater, or choir, we are confident that Nicole will continue to achieve in remarkable things. Congratulations. Nicole, tell us who's in the audience with you here today?
We've got my mom. We've got Dr. Keith, Department Chair of the Fine Arts. We've got Mr. Strom, TV Film Teacher.
Tell us a little bit about your future goals. What's next?
Um, I'm applying to colleges in New York and California to pursue film.
Right on. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations again, Nicole. All right, if we can move to Maine West.
All right, Jayden. Jayden Masonette, please come on up. So glad you made it. I heard you were getting your ID so you could vote tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, so Jayden Masonette tells me they have been singing since they were a baby, humming along to "In the Bites" even before they had words. They have tried and owned numerous instruments along the way, but it's safe to say that they have grown it. It's their voice that has distinguished them as a virtuoso. And in their time in high school, they truly learned how to use it. Jayden recalls a defining moment as a ladybug in a bug story in elementary school. But the audience's reaction to "Be Our Guest" in the winter of 2022 galvanized their way forward as a performer. The explosive applause, which I also remember vividly, contained a message. "I knew we were going to be okay," they told me. That first musical set Jayden on the path to doing every production we have had since, culminating in this year's operating, The Little Mermaid. They have become, by their own description, more confident, more outgoing, and more skilled. These experiences led Jayden to branch out beyond our school, auditioning into an intensive four-week musical theater class at the Goodman Theater, in which they learned about the history of theater and built a musical from the ground up with other really talented, dedicated performers. They recalled one piece in particular, "It's Not the Waking, It's the Rising", that portrayed young people's reactions to the Fourth of July shooting in Highland Park. The power of that piece and the opportunity to explore the raw intensity of our experiences helped underscore the bright light and potent medicine that theater provides for us as human beings. Jayden will again work among the most talented performers in Illinois at Theater Fest, as they have been named an All-State Selection this year. They will appear in the prom, and there's no question that they belong on that stage with the most elite performers in the state. At Maine West, Jayden also performs in the Symphony Orchestra, in choral leers, in the V Show, and in the Chamber Choir. They take music production, acoustic theater, and guitar in poli. They work on the tech crew. They participate in Drama Club and the American Sign Language Club. But please don't succumb to the temptation to think, oh, they're a theater kid. And that could encompass all of the many ways in which Jayden is distinguished in their work at Maine West. Just because I focus on one thing doesn't mean I am not good at others, they told me, noting that they relish opportunities they have had to bring powerful creativity to academic subjects. They make their notes visually arresting, transporting their tendency to doodle into an effective strategy for learning review. They seize upon any opportunity to bring authentic ideas and cultural assets into projects and writing assignments. They have learned to ask teachers for what they need to learn effectively, using their voice to grow into a person who is unafraid, who yells from the bleachers at Cubs games and Maine West football games, who left the self-consciousness of middle school behind and evolved into a leader who embraces the support of her mom, her dad, and her brother wholeheartedly. Jayden has been singing for their whole life, and they will continue. They will be heard. Jayden's influence upon their teachers has also been impactful. Ms. Ryan has loved Jayden's creative contributions in class. Jay's artistic ability helps them visualize abstract concepts and intro to psychology. It is super cool to see them put the ideas we are learning into a visual representation. Great job. Mr. Schiffer highlighted Jayden's commitment and work ethic. Jay has absolutely thrived in the Maine West Fine Arts Department, where they are involved in choir, orchestra, and drama. Involved as they are, Jay is completely committed to excellence and is a hard worker. I see this in class daily as they ask critical questions and rarely miss a rehearsal. Not only do they show up willing and prepared to work, but they are an active participant in all that they are part of. They are a leader among their peers and a role model to our younger students. Moreover, Jay has demonstrated leadership through our choir, executive board, and Triumph, musical honor society. Ms. Cooper Thompson cherishes Jayden's laughter. One of the fantastic things about Jayden is their laughter. In the library and in our clubs, I am always excited to see Jayden because I know they are bringing joy with them. Mr. Trella can speak to Jayden's voice as he's seen it in adventure education. Jayden is a genuine leader and positive force. Their social and emotional intelligence commands the respect of their peers and teachers alike. I hope they remember us when they become famous for changing the world for the better. Mr. Harmon highlighted Jayden's contributions to the theater program through performance, but also through their character. Jay has been such an asset to our program. Having devoted the past four years to theater, Jay has been featured in several lead roles, which include Janet in Mean Girls, Frau Blücher in Young Frankenstein, and most recently, Peas Blossom in Fairy Kinks. Moreover, they are president of the Drama Club and have led the effort on several events and initiatives this fall. Jay is an absolute pleasure to work with. They have the zeal for taking risks, making bold choices, and their positivity and warmth disarms everyone around them. They are a staunch upstander when they witness an injustice and genuinely care about doing what's right. Ms. Valdez was happy to express her pride in Jayden's growth through our high school. I have had the pleasure of knowing Jayden and their family for the past four years. It has been a joy to watch them grow up and find their place in the E-Wing. Jay is an advocate for kindness, patience, and understanding. It makes me proud to see a young Latina student that is thriving, bold, and courageous. They will continue to bring joy to the world through art, music, and theater. Congratulations. This recognition is well deserved. Did we introduce who's here with you tonight?
Yeah, so I've got my mom and my dad, and there's Mr. Beckwith.
Can you talk about your plans for next year?
Um, I plan to either continue musical theater or go into songwriting. I have my audition for Brooklyn College of Music in Boston in three weeks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep us posted. I'm gonna be cheering for you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Jayden. Congratulations to all of our students. So much to be proud of. Um, this is the point where you get to go take pictures out in the hallway. You are welcome to come back, but you don't have to to stay with us for the rest of the meeting. But thank you so much. But thank you so much, such amazing things our students are doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
She's doing B show, so I said out.
All right. All right, let's keep moving forward. All right, does it appear that there are any public comments or are there? Okay. If not, if we can get an update from our superintendent.
Absolutely. Today, we're highlighting that we're celebrating School Board Appreciation Day. So just wanted to take a minute to thank you so much for sharing your talents and your time with us, for your dedication to District 207. Jenny organized a little gift for you as a token of appreciation for all that you do. We hope that you enjoy it and thank you again for everything that you do each and every day and all the work that you put into making Maine a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Okay. All righty. Any updates from our board members?
I don't know.
Yeah?
So I'm very excited to announce this. Dr. Marco Jaco from the Juniper Center, who she's the owner of the Juniper Center, it's a mental health treatment center. She has founded a nonprofit foundation called Bridging the Collective. And she is willing, has offered us free mental health services for our students through the school-based healthcare center. And so this is very exciting because it's, I mean, right now she said that she has openings for 40 students. And she's, I mean, I'm just thrilled with this because it's totally free. And her, she said she could do it virtually or in person. And it's, her office is centrally located between Main East, Main West, and Main South. And it's just, I'm very excited because she built this foundation because she always wanted to be able to offer free mental health services to teens, but wasn't able to because she had, she couldn't ask her staff to do it for free. So through the foundation, she's able to do that. So we're, Amy Carlson and Amarillis Rivera, that's who's running it. And so we're going to get together and just make this work. So I'm really happy and I want to thank Dr. Jaco for making this happen. Without her force, I wouldn't be able to do it. So, and that was one of the positive things about working with McAfee, I can tell you. I met wonderful people. So the, a second thing I wanted to just, I know you guys have seen this before, but it's my, where is this sheet? Yes, just a quick sheet. It's the Annual Life of Dreams Project. And it's a community project where we've had a thousand people come through in a day and we've made up to 700 blankets in a day. And so we are giving them to the homeless through the Franciscan Outreach, through La Casa Norte, and through Our Lady of Angels Mission on the West Side. And I'm really happy about this. It's our 23rd year, 20, 20, can't remember, 22nd, I think it might be 23rd. But I started it, when I started this that long ago, I never thought it would go this far or get touch as many people. And I wanted to bring it here tonight because we have so many kids that are involved in this from service projects. We have East, West, and South are well representative of this tonight. And would invite you guys to come too if you ever want to. You don't have to stay for a long time, just, you know, come stay as long as you want and, you know. Anyway, I just wanted, that's November 23rd.
Are they physically making it?
Yeah, you make it, huh? Yeah, I'll teach you.
Will students refer to the woman working with the Juniper Center through the district or through the school?
Yes, through Amarillis.
Amarillis is the current mental health center.
Yeah, it's through the health center. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Terry, for sharing that very great news and being such a great need both events, yeah.
I have another exciting news. Our MOU International Sisters' School from South Korea, Taekwondo High School, they will be visiting next year in January, January 21 through 25. And we are expecting about 25 students or so and two teachers. Again, all these students are first time ever visiting the United States, visiting first time in Chicago, learn and experiencing the hosting family, American culture throughout. So the students have been really appreciated and they're very excited about the principals hosting a great opportunity for this international student. So we are very excited with that. And we are looking forward to asking, again, principals to help assist building a beautiful hosting family culture atmosphere again on this coming year, January 21 through 25. So we should expect students coming in to Chicago early in the morning and then hopefully we will be able to, you know, discuss arrangements, time scheduling in visiting different schools and, you know, other welcoming those international students ever. And again, throughout their experience, once in their lifetime when they visit the U.S., to the Chicago area, through this district's humble embracing and love and care, their kids will never forget. And they really will be greatly appreciated. And after they return back, they're truly became different, better characteristic person being. And they talk about so many wonderful cultural experiences about the United States and all the wonderful experience the students experiencing through a home care, the host family experience. So just very excited to share that. We'll provide more details, information, you know, time comes. And we will be once again as king of principals and also new superintendent for the welcoming assistance.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? All right. If not, we can go ahead and move to monthly status of finances with Mary.
In your board packet is the September financial statement. As we talked about in August, the revenue side, property taxes we just received early this year. So the revenue receipt will look kind of out of balance because last year they were due in November, so you'll see those months with variances. And on the expenditure side, expenditures are in line with the budget. And with previous years, you'll see some variations in those funds that do capital projects because it's about how much we've gotten done over the summer. So that's why, like Health, Safety, you'll see is fully expanded its budget because we do work in the summer. Also attached is the September 30th Market Variance Report for our investments, which shows that we still have a paper loss. However, that paper loss is dramatically declining over the last couple of years. In 2023, it was about 5.5 million. When we closed 2024 in June, it was about 3.2. Now you can see it's 2.1. The good news for that is that we will start being able to have a positive receipt of interest income this year. And it's been the first time probably in four or five years that this market-to-value adjustment hasn't wiped out all of our interest income. We saw that happen in 2024. When you get the audit, you'll see a variance in there because this adjustment is going down. I will entertain any questions that anybody has either on the investment volatility report or the September financial statement.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mary. We can move to instructional services. Sean, summer school update.
So in your packet, you will find the yearly report or annual report of summer school. Listed there are not only our summer enrollments, but our fourth camp enrollments as well. Is there any questions?
Sean, the only thing I caught, on the second page, under totals, it says 516. I think that could be 506.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, and then on the first page, for total academic and athletic enrollments, what would, or what would account for like the large numbers at South as opposed to the other numbers at East and West in terms of enrollment?
Well, in terms of enrollment, particularly in the health course, South had 100 students take health in the summer, which is extremely high number. That's not the case typically at East and West.
But it's offered in East and West too in the summer?
Do you still offer your middle, middle school camps?
Yeah.
Does this include them? I mean, this consists of, so it's high school students, they have middle school.
Yes, the summer, so our summer camps are actually work for our high school students. But these are the programs run by our athletic programs for middle school and elementary students.
Okay. Oh, it's not, it's not the camps that are for the, like, football players that are to?
They're all.
Okay.
Could, Sean, could outside of the community student members and/or any interested students possibly from international students, were they be able to participate in our district's summer school? Any chance?
Summer school is not closed to just district students. So if someone wanted to, they could.
Any other questions?
Just for the profit and loss statement for regular school, summer school. I'm assuming the declining number in CARES Act is because we're out of COVID. Then, you know, 2020 and 2021 were higher and 2022, 23, 24, we've been coming down.
Yeah.
And what's, why is the tuition gone down as well during that period, those three years?
So coming out of COVID, we had, we had, it's like the first year there was a spike, but then after that, there was a precipitous drop in summer school. I'm not sure if we did some health curriculum changes in 2022. Think that's when we started to.
Well, we did, because we offered online and there is not a need for a student to physically come to our campus, we did see it up too. And it's also, we also, at that point, hoping that both freshmen and sophomores as a person, we start to have.
Okay. The student participation report.
So in your packet as well, this is a brief report on the number of students involved in various different activities. This is for school year 23, 24. Is there any questions you might have?
Right.
I just one question on the participation. Does that include the music and art, is that classes too? Or are these just?
No, these are extra regular activities.
Okay.
Have we seen any, so I know that it's not, it's not broken down for the previous years, but have we seen any like major shifts or?
Every year, it kind of fluctuates up and down depending upon the interest of the students. We've not seen any, well, since COVID, I would say we're back to pre-COVID numbers. We slowly correct back up. But this is about standard for individual schools each year.
And again, Main South distinguished between other two schools is almost double on this participation. Can probably make the balance of something related to our disinterest as with, because the number is huge difference always.
Well, there's a larger student population at South, so there's a larger representative number. Also, to be quite honest with you, South having a little bit more, being more of an affluent student population has an opportunity very often to participate ways some of our students who come from more economically challenged homes can.
Any other questions? All right. If not, thank you so much, Sean. Our monthly update on four year requests.
Since our last meeting, we have received four requests and we have either responded or in the process of responding to them.
Thank you. And let's move to Board of Education policies. We have a first reading on a few items. I'll pass that to George.
Just to give you a little background, U.S. Department of Education released their final Title IX regulations in the spring. Press policy came out in August. And then in September and October, the Policy Committee met twice to go through policies A through E. So the recommended changes there are from press policy, the Policy Committee has looked through the new policies. Board Policy F is actually a brand new policy during the October 4th. Mr. Akziski came in, the Director of Special Education. I thought we had a good conversation of different service animals. Board Policy G and H, we as an administration had some conversation about this. Our recommendation is to let G and H go together. Our recommendations would delete H, which is very specific with class size. And actually, Kate pointed out some, just some things that are driven by state and federal laws. So we have a policy that's not flexible. And we're recommending Board Policy G, teaching loading class size, which is in the board packet, just a more general policy. Doesn't violate any type of contract language. I think the administration, every year, we've been very upfront, transparent with the union as far as class size, we constantly look at the report, which is feel like this policy provides flexibility for programming and changes as we see fit. We consider everything as far as class size, programs, curriculum, different level of curriculums as well. So I think that policy gives us more flexibility.
So George, what are we expecting to see regarding, even though this is first reading, team dating violence, discrimination, harassment, harassment of students, whatever, and so on? Are we going to see any differences?
As far as policy wise, I can see it's required procedurally wise as well. In turn, in fact, all the administrators, in the past month, we went to Title, like 16 administrators went to the Title IX training. So it's really updating the policies and procedures and informing administrators in policies.
At starting of the year, of course, all the staff, employees were to take these courses or.
Yeah, the staff does a general training to GCN, so they've gone through the Title IX. As administrators, we went through a more detailed training, but they are aware of a new Title IX.
Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, thank you, George. All right. We're moving to new courses, which is a first reading on Math for STEM. Sean?
So the Transitional Math Four course is one that is one of three options for the state as part of its, part of our partnership with our community college. So for example, students who are not on pace to be in a credit-bearing math course at the college level, their senior year can take the transition course and successful completion of that course places them directly in credit-bearing math at the community college. We have the Quantitative Literacy course, which has not had many students take it. And as we started to investigate that, a lot of our students still want to go into a field that requires a STEM math background. So for example, business still requires that STEM math background. Many of our students, regardless of their current performance, still do want to pursue that. This will help them to get right into credit-bearing math.
That's an important bridge up. Thank you.
Are you, are you doing away then with the quantitative literacy?
We'll still offer it, but in the last couple of years, we, in fact, I think it's South that did it run. So we're just looking for what's that right mix for students. A lot of our students can actually access a course we have called Math Human Endeavors, which has a lower entry point in terms of standardized scores. We teach that with Easter, and that's actually a dual predator. So it's sort of a little bit of the, some of the dance between schools and what's acceptable.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions? Thank you so much, Sean. All right, we're, let's move on to our action items. Can I get a motion on items, or nine A through, A through F?
Please move.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on the school calendar for academic year 2025, 2026?
Please move. Second.
Thank you. And then Sean?
So this is our school calendar. We're trying to project two years out according to the planning. Probably the biggest change that we have is embedding two, four PD days. You may remember in last year's calendar, we had tried an iteration of half-days for professional development. Logistically, that really didn't work out the way that we had wanted it to. Quite frankly, too many folks moving around the district and not enough time to deliver the PD we wanted to. And so this year, we've been, we've added two professional development days, which will be days off for the students, but one days for our teachers.
And again, with the winter breaks and so on, what the students are very pleased with, before the long holidays, they were able to take all the tests, exam, and everything and then, you know, not have to worry about.
Hopefully take that right there.
The next, so 179 days total that there will be participants, that 188 decrease.
So the state requires 176. We in the past have built in 181s of five extra days in an effort to, as we have been trying to provide more professional development, not only for our teaching staff, but for our support staff as well, which we have long not been able to provide that because of their hourly work schedule. We can stay, we can still meet the state requirement with room to spare for student days, but then also deliver that professional development. We've been trying to build the capacity.
Sean, are the two teacher institute days, is that new? I mean, isn't that what we have now?
No.
In the beginning?
Well, there's institute days and there's professional development days. They're two separate things. So we have four institute days, two of which start the year.
Wait, four to start the year? Two start the year?
Two start the year. And then now throughout the year, we'll have two institute days and two PD.
Oh, I got it.
Roughly one quarter.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Jenny, can you take the role?
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Youssef Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on new textbook and new course approval? New textbook for World Language Assyrian I and new course, World Language Assyrian II?
Second.
Thank you. And back to Sean.
Any questions? This is the second reading. As you know, this is a course that we've been handling for many years, student, by student demand. So it's nice to see that student demand appear when you put it out there as an idea because that's not always the case. So this will be the development of not only one, but now those students matriculating into Assyrian II.
Any, any discussion? All right. We had, I remember, a full discussion last time. So Jenny, can you take the role?
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Youssef Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on the 2024 tax levy?
Second.
All right. Mary?
So this is the adoption of the tentative tax levy tonight. The tax levy has a proposed increase of 4.69% and our cap fund in an overall increase of 4.2. And that is at a, at an amount of new growth of $70 million. What we really think is that our new growth will be closer to 40 million and we'd drop that tax levy down to a 4.16% increase. What's important to note is that with CPI being 3.4%, the most we can get on new, on existing property is that CPI increase of 3.4%. So levying an amount above that is just simply levying for the new growth. I want to point out that new this year is a cash disclosures calculation that we are required to provide. In August, a new law was passed that kind of got at how much is too much in cash reserves. So what the law stated is that you have to take the three-year average of your operating funds, which the state defined as the educational fund, the operation maintenance fund, and the transportation fund. Take the three-year average expenditure in those funds, compare it to your June 30th cash reserve amount. And if that cash reserve amount is two and a half times the three-year average, you must file a cash reserve reduction plan with the state. Ours is significantly below that threshold, about half of that threshold. So you'll see this new calculation every time that we present the tax levy. Compare it to the law. So we are, we're at, we're at half of what the state would require for us to file a cash reserve reduction plan.
What would that look like?
I don't know. I have a feeling what it would do is, is we would have to draft a way of either spending down, giving back, some kind of. spending down, giving back, some kind of way to reduce the cash balance. Since we did not have to comply, I did not really look into.
I was just curious. It's kind of new that they requested this, right?
Yes.
Now, one quick question. You said levying for 70 million, is it new growth of 40 million?
It, it, we're levying for 70 million in new growth. We anticipate that new growth number to be around 40 million.
Well, it says 50.
Oh, no, I did the calculations based on 40. So if it says 50 in the memo, I do apologize. And if you look at our historical amount, we've been in the high 30s, 32 million last year, but about 36. We, we jumped significantly above that when we have major TIPS expiring. So when we saw that 92 million, it's because we had a downtown disciplines tip expiring. It was atypical new growth. We don't, we have A-TIP expiring, but it's like a million dollars when we permit it. So it's, it's not going to produce a very large variance. To go over some of the timelines, new, the, the new truth in taxation law, because we are levying under 5%, we do not have to comply with truth in taxation as transparency to our community. We do comply with the truth in taxation law. We have now published this tentative lobby on our website. We will be publishing it in the newspaper on November 22nd. We will be having a public hearing at the next Board of Education meeting before the Board of Education meeting begins, which will give it an opportunity for the community to comment on this lobby. So new this year is the, the publishing on the website 30 days in advance of the adoption of the lobby as well. So the new law had two components. One was the, the cash reserve disclosure and calculation, and two was publishing on the front page of the website, the tentative lobby. I know I went over this at the special board meeting. This is the memo and the calculations that you see every year, but I will entertain any questions that you have. I also included the resolutions that go along with the passage of the lobby in December.
Any other discussion?
Have we ever done a tax levy? I don't think we've done it in my time. Have you done a tax levy greater than 5%?
We may have done last year was maybe a little over five with new property.
Did you do it? I haven't forgotten that.
Because last year was probably the first year we ever had to comply with truth in taxation since the height of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You take the role.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the approval of bids and awarding of contract for Momentum?
So move.
All right. Katie?
We're asking the board to approve a contract with Momentum therapeutic services. This is to provide behavior therapy services for students outlined in their IEP. This is for therapy services that are not able to be provided by our staff. Some of that includes like home-based services for students who may be on homebound and do require service, as well as students in our building who do require additional therapeutic supports. We have used Momentum in the past, and it's anticipated that they will provide about 15 hours a week in therapy services to be paid through the IDA grant.
Okay. These people are coming into our school, yes?
Yes.
You don't have to go there?
No, they come into the school and all of that is done, like they have all the background checking, face lock, all of that done like any other contracted employee.
And since we've been using them before, but they're, the business are located where?
So they do have an office, well, they have offices all over. Their home, like the, their like home office is actually in California, but they have offices here in Illinois as well, locally, so yeah. There are one in Illinois goes through Sycamore, but they have people more locally that come in here.
Katie, one question. You said 15 hours a week in total?
15 hours a week plus three hours of home-based services.
Okay, but that's total?
Total.
Okay. Is that driven by like the grant amount? I mean, could we use more?
So it's really based on current need.
Okay.
So that's really where the anticipated amount comes from, is based on the IEPs that are currently in need of the service that goes beyond what we currently have.
Okay, okay.
So yeah, I mean, if we needed more, we could absolutely come back and request more. But right now, that's what's anticipated.
Well, will this cover kids who are up to 22?
Yep, all of our students that we serve through the school year in which they turn 22, that are continuing to be eligible. So any student with an IEP, yes. So.
Yeah, that's right. Students still, you know, I was trying to remember, at 22, I mean, they could still have IEPs at, at 22, they don't, it's not just that they're in a life skills program. You know, I always think of people moving to the transition center at Main East, but they're, it's still under an IEP, right? So they're under an IEP forever.
Until they graduate or until they leave. Or if they are not eligible.
Oh, well.
Yeah. And we do have a V CBA who also provides services, therapeutic services for behavior management, but these are additional supports on top of that.
Overall, do we need to find more support or assistance on this program services? Or like you said, are we okay?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the reason we're proposing this is because we do need additional support, and so we've contracted to be able to provide that additional support. So based on the needs of the students, which are very clearly identified and delineated in the IEP, we feel that this amount is the required amount for right now.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You take the role.
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on the, an MOU with Dominican University for dual credit courses?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
This is the MOU that's required by the state law related to the Dual Credit Quality Act. We are currently offering Italian for through Dominican University and this just EXAR agreement sealed within the next five years.
Don't we also have other dual credit with the university, Dominican addition?
Other, we, well, we have with Dominican, we just had the Italian for with Lake, Lake Forest, right? Lake Forest, we, sorry, we have Spanish and French as well.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just had a quick question. When we go into dual credit course discussions with the university, are there, is there a standard across the state that we have to use it? Or is there, I mean, do we, is it a new discussion every time? Or is it, the, the standards are, you know, set and this is just like, will you do it or won't you do it?
It's not necessar, well, it kind of is. It's kind of a new conversation each time, only because at the collegiate level, you're really dealing more with an department than you are with the administration of the college.
Oh, okay.
So if we were dealing with the administration of the college, the way you would in a high school setting, it'd be more, it'd be pretty routine.
Yeah.
But because of the shared governance model at the, at the collegiate level, we're having direct conversations with the department chair or heads of those departments, and that, that varies depending upon sort of the individual and their, their acceptance of dual credit. Let me, let me put it this way. Their level of comfort with certifying one of our teachers to teach a dual credit course at the high school.
Sean, this says it's pursuant to the Dual Credit Quality Act. Is there, but, but who dictates what's in here? I mean, this is Dominican, basically.
They're basically, it's between us and Dominican.
So they don't, okay, right.
Yeah. Is there a model one?
Yes.
Do all schools use it? No?
Yeah, it's kind of what I, you said it better than I did.
The, the one that we have with Oakden is closest to the model.
Okay.
So that's a good one to look at and say, this is kind of the extent to what most of them are supposed to look like. However, there's no, I guess there's no dual credit police looking at the MOU.
All right. If no other questions? Yeah, thank you. Jenny?
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on the approval of a maintenance grant, grant application?
So you move.
Second.
Thank you. Mary?
Once again, this year, the state is offering $50,000 maintenance grant. It is a matching grant. So tonight, you'll be approving the application for the district to apply for the grant. We have, as in previous years, used it to offset the cost of tuck pointing, which is a project that we would do anyway. So under capital projects, you'll see the approval for a $500,000 estimate for tuck pointing. If this maintenance grant is accepted by the state after we file it, it will just offset the cost of that $500,000.
Or the White Company will be working with us on this project?
Yes. White and Company is our architect of record and will be working with the district and many of the bid specifications that for both tuck pointing and for, and actually, tuck pointing, I believe, we work with Inspec because they are our consultant for building envelope. So they do our roofs and our masonry work. So White will be involved in many projects, but for those specialized building envelope projects, we use Inspec.
Any other discussion? Okay, now, you can take the role, Jenny.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on capital projects 2025?
Second.
Thank you. Mary?
So tonight is, and we went through this in detail at the special board meeting, is many of the projects which are in year one are of our five-year facility master plan. We categorize them in areas of ADA, educational needs, extracurricular needs, infrastructure needs, some life safety needs, and security needs. So this memo outlines a host of projects, both on the interior of the building and the exterior. I would say this begins our, our major push towards door and light replacement as well as key control, which will be a multi-year security project. But then you'll see the roofs, you'll see the parking lots and a host of other capital projects throughout here. So rather than go through each individual project, which is what we did at the special board meeting, I'll just entertain any questions that anybody has on any of the projects. I should point out that this is not the only time you'll see these projects. Tonight's approval means that we move these projects forward to design and to bid. Then these bids will come back before the Board of Education for approval. So if there is a variance between what the estimates are, there is another opportunity for the board to see them before we move forward with these projects.
And what's the timeline on that?
It varies by project, but you'll start to see bids come before the board probably in January.
Also related to our summer construction projects budget wise, have we been safe per se, based on the referendum, the money that we've been utilizing offset or helping lowering the construction costs possibly?
So as we pointed out, all during the referendum, post referendum, we would need to spend between eight and nine million dollars each year to maintain our buildings. I would say what is new with this plan is an additional sum of money we want to spend to bolster the safety and security of our schools. But yes, while the referendum funds did a lack of infrastructure, we still have over 1.5 million square feet under roof. So obviously, we're going to have to do roofs every year, but if there are, there are many mechanical pieces of equipment, many floors, many walls, many, everything to maintain within those buildings. And you'll see a lot of the focus on the next five years is going to be the exterior because we really didn't do a lot to the exterior of our school. So you'll see the stadium turf, you'll see starting to design for that, starting to have a comprehensive plan for the replacement of fencing over five years. So looking at our ADA compliance with field usage. So those are, those are all things that we really didn't touch the outside in the referendum.
So based on that, the cost in, prediction wise, are we expecting to see any again, based on construction company discussions, the high cost increase of the material cost, the labor cost? Or has it that been, say, kind of like controllable?
I would say construction costs have increased as, as have pretty much all costs across the board. I would say post-COVID, construction costs are up 30% and that doesn't seem to be going down. That increase is reflected in the estimates that we are, we have here. In terms of what somebody will actually bid, we won't know those until we bid those. That's what we give you kind of an order of magnitude based on the architect's experience with projects this size and, and in terms of what we're trying to do. So yes, construction costs, like all costs, have, have escalated. There still is a shortage in the construction laborers market, and there are contracts of those labor agreements have settled, have settled for increased cost because of that shortage. So we, like everybody, will be paying more for construction, which is why we are very, very fortunate that we did as much work as that we did in the last several years at a lower construction cost point.
So although we're strategically, we are having a continuing conversation with the other contractors or architects like, you know, White and others, maybe purchasing a pre-material cost to save the cost, we took that advantages or benefits throughout experience that we had, remember?
Yes, but I would say what's different here is that there, you know, we knew that we were going to, you know, the, none of what you see here is a high material cost. I would say the closest to that in the whole five years is the boiler replacement at East. And when we get to that point, because that will be designed and bid in two different year, it's only one project. We were able to purchase, pre-purchase equipment because we were doing multi-year projects, the same type of project. So it may, as we start to design that boiler project, we may consider pre-purchase of that boiler, but those are smaller pieces of equipment than we had traditionally pre-purchased.
Good to know. Thank you.
Mary, question. We don't see like, I thought when we met last time, we, we had years two through five, we don't get spelled out.
You did. What you're approving tonight is only year one.
Right, okay.
So, because years two through five are still in kind of like, this is where we think we're going. We said we'll come back and update the board in the spring on years two through five. So this is, this is just what we're moving forward into the bidding phase for this year.
Okay. So, so when we have the language about next steps?
Oh, yeah. Actually, this was Dave's memo, so we took off, so you should not have the next steps in here.
Okay, okay, okay.
So that's.
That would come off there.
Yes.
So this is really like, it's the first year of the five year.
It is the first year of the five year. These are the projects moving forward to the bidding or design thing.
But what's laid out here isn't, isn't, there could be other things that come up in year two that are not within the projects here, for example.
Absolutely. This is just work that we plan on completing summer of 2025. So the board has to approve it so that we can get to work on designing and bidding.
I just think it's important that when we talk about a five-year plan, we actually aren't seeing it here.
Correct.
We're only seeing.
You're only seeing year one.
Okay. Well, we did see it at.
You did see it at the special board meeting. And then at that board meeting, we said, and, and we are only going to be taking action on year one. Because think of it as like, this is kind of the, in stone, the projects we're going Because think of it as like, this is kind of the in stone, the projects we're going to do. Year two through five are kind of like, this is kind of where we think we're going and how we think we're going to spend. But there is flexibility in terms of what projects we're doing in what year in that arena.
I would just amend the motion then, just to delete the next steps. Just for, to make sure. Because we're approving this, right? We're actually approving this?
Yeah, yeah, it does say just approve the summer construction projects for 2025 as presented. But you want, you want.
That includes the next step.
So.
I just think, I just want it more clear.
We can do that.
Just to, to delete that.
And then a call to motion. So, so can I, um, can I get a motion that the Board of Education approves the summer construction projects for 2025 with next steps removed?
So moved.
Just from the memo.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. All right. Any, any other discussion or questions for Mary?
Yeah, and just in terms of the timeline. So for instance, like year two, you know, when would that be quote-unquote set in stone? You know, to, you know, in case something like something big, you know, happened on a campus and you need to maybe look at this and say, what can we take out of year two? And.
So we have traditionally brought the projects to the November board meeting. I would say that it might go a little bit earlier next year because there are products that we might want to take a little bit longer to design. And we've tried it, when we have to design something in advance, we've said, hey, we're approving it into the design, moving forward with design this year, then construction the following year. But we have traditionally done it in the fall. So by the fall, we need to know what we're doing in the summer so that we can get on designing and bidding. Uh, and which is why I recommended a spring meeting to kind of hash out like, okay, is this still the direction we want to go? Are there things that we want to move within the plan? Or are there additional things that we want to consider so that we could have time to do that?
So you would bring something to us in the spring?
In the spring, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at, we're doing, we do like year two check-in.
Oh, okay. So, okay. Yeah, so there's a lot of, you know, discussion there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No, but just great, you know, there's so much here, great work.
Yeah.
A lot of work behind this.
Thank you. All right. Jenny, if you can take the role.
Iker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion on the 2025 health insurance renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mary.
So this memo outlines the premiums for the PPO, the high deductible health plan, the HMO, and the two dental programs. The PPO and the high deductible plan are calling for a better than a 15% increase in premiums, 15.9 on PPO, 15.1 on the high deductible plan. The HMOs are calling for a premium increase of 7.1%. The self-insured dental plan is calling for a 3.7% increase and our fully insured dental HMO is calling for a 3% increase. These percentages are determined actuarially based on where our claims and fixed costs are expected to go. They're, consider them like the insurance budget. So premiums are, are what we think we need to be collecting to cover the expenditures. These were, I would say that post-COVID, everybody is seeing increases in insurance like this. Actually, I think the HMO is probably a little low compared to what other people are experiencing. But I wanted to point out that, you know, we had language that then we did a contract extension with our, our teachers to kind of negate that. So the board will be bearing more of the cost and the premium split between employee and employer will remain unchanged. There is one small plan design change that we must make by law, and that is increasing the deductible on the high deductible plan. We have always had the federal minimum deductible on that plan. The federal government increased what they would consider a minimum deductible for a high deductible plan, so we have to go up.
And we just went up to that.
And we just went up.
The new minimum.
Yes. And it's $50 increase in the deductible per single and $100 for family.
So I know we did intensively discuss this at the special meeting previously thoroughly. But along that line, most definitely, we did see a high increase of the employer staff's healthy, what should I say?
Claims.
Yeah, healthy claims over the way.
So I would say what is driving this is a, is a handful of very significant claims. I, and, and it's just the lack of, of health insurance or the unluck of health insurance is that, that is not atypical, just like car insurance. We all pay car insurance, but it is not very often that we need to use that insurance. We all pay for the health insurance, but really, it's, it's very, some very unfortunate and catastrophic issues.
Similar to what's happening in the hearts of the world. There's lots of, you know, catastrophes there happening.
All right. Any other discussions? All right. Jenny, if you could take the role.
Iker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion of waiver of facility fees? These are both Main East. It's the U M P S baseball training umpire education program and the Gulf Main Park District basketball program.
So moved.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So the first of the two is just to continue that collaboration and partnership with our IHSA officials. Obviously, it's very beneficial to our students, our teams at all three buildings and across our conference to have highly qualified officials. We'd like them to be able to train in our facility. And the second one, the Gulf Main Park District, similarly, just to maintain that collaboration, we've developed a great partnership with the Gulf Main Park District. Our basketball program is on its way to positive transformation. That partnership's been really important to us.
All right. Any, any questions, discussions? Always want to support those community partnerships. So if not, let's go ahead and take the role.
Lee.
Aye.
Coyle. I'm sorry. Collins.
Aye.
Iker.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye. All right. Next item is informational. These are our calendar items. So please take note. Are there, are there any that I should highlight? You can take out these. Yeah, for a while. So, so again, calendar items. No public comments.
Nope.
All right. Thank you. So can I get a motion to move into closed session for a discussion of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and probable imminent or pending litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.